Okay, we are recording. Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Today, we are already on record, I'm recording, I'm sorry. It is May 3, 2021. It's 5 o'clock, 5:04 now. And the first matter tonight is the Petrucci, Petrucci, 35 Castle Road. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I see that counsel is present for the applicant. And no introduction may be necessary for Steve Smith, but I'm going to introduce everyone anyway for the record. And tonight, we are having a Zoom meeting. Oh, great. Our building instructor, Wayne Wilson, has just joined us. And hi, Wayne. We're just getting started. And tonight, we're having a meeting via Zoom pursuant to the order of Governor Baker, the March 22, 2021. I'm sorry, 2020. And so the first meeting tonight is regarding, again, 35 Castle Road, Mr. and Mrs. Petrucci. And I'd like to call that meeting to order. Introduce the board members, who are myself, Jocelyn Campbell, Peter Barber, Max Casper, David McCool, and Michael Ralwar. Those will be the members hearing tonight. David Walsh is also on the board list, but he's in his presence, but he's not going to be active tonight for this hearing. So the next part of the process is that I'm going to read the notice that was published in the newspaper. And then we will begin the hearing and hear from Attorney Smith. So the hearing notice was published on April 19 and April 26. And it reads as follows. A public hearing will be held on the petition filed by Ronald Petrucci for the property located at 35 Castle Road, Nahat, Massachusetts, seeking a special permit to allow a building height of over 30 feet pursuant to Section 502 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Nahat. The inspector of buildings has issued a cease and desist letter dated March 1, 2021, because the actual renovation of the building is not consistent with the building permit application and plans submitted. Okay. So. Mr. Smith, would you like to get started?
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. Stephen Smith appearing on behalf of the petitioner, Ronald Petrucci. If I could, I just want to give the start by giving the board a general description of the property that's the subject of the petition before you. 35 Castle Road is in an R2 district. The lot is 11,900 square feet. It hosts a single-family dwelling. Originally, the property was developed on or around 1949, according to town records, with a one-and-a-half-story building. More recently, the property was purchased by the petitioner back in 2014. And just recently, he had begun removing and replacing the existing one-and-a-half-story structure with a two-and-a-half-story structure. I didn't prepare the application, but my understanding is part of the application, the board would have received a reduced certified plot plan prepared by Ralph Reed showing the existing footprint of the property. Is that correct?
Well, we not only received some piece of the plot plan with the application, but we also received a revised, looks like a revised plot plan with a lot of writing on it. Everyone in the board received the copy I sent out for that purpose?
Yes.
That you sent out today?
Yes. I just received it, I believe, with late Friday or today.
I received it, but I'm a little bit curious as to what effect it has, because it's handwritten notes. And I guess these are attributable to the surveyor, correct?
It looks like it, yes. And we'll talk about that during our deliberations.
Okay.
And I'll get to explaining what those plans are. But the first plan I wanted to reference was the Reed Land Surveyor Plot Plan, just showing the existing footprint of the home and where it's positioned on the property. And if you see it, it'll show there's a 15-foot front yard to the front of the front porch area. There's a right-side yard of 19-plus feet, left-side yard approximately 40 feet. I want to double-check that with my magnifying glass. In the rear yard, which I don't believe is measured out, but is well in excess of 40 feet. There was a second plan that I think the one you were referencing that was submitted on Friday that was prepared by Chuck Fair and more recently submitted, distributed to members of the board. And that's a plot plan done by Regis Land Surveyor Charles Fair, which was put together to show some of the dimensional qualities of what exists on the property today. And so on the handwritten notes on the stamp plan, Mr. Fair references lot coverage, also referred to as building coverage, with the existing structure is 18.8%. The open space is 64.5%. The floor-to-area ratio is 27.7%. And he references a calculation from the next plan I'll reference of the dwelling height, which is 31.6 feet plus or minus. And that's why we're here tonight. The issue is the height of the existing structure exceeds the maximum allowable 30 feet in that zoning district. And so we are seeking a special permit allowing for that additional 1.6 feet or 1 foot 7.2 inches to continue to exist. The third plan you would see would be the Parsons and Fair plan that shows how he calculated the height, again, as a stamp plan done by Mr. Fair, showing a building height of 31.6 feet exterior. That was done with the surveyor's level and a 25-foot surveying rod, which apparently is rare in the industry to measure from the outside. He also did an inside measurement, which was slightly less than that, which accounts for the framing at the very peak of the property. We went with the greater height of 31.6 feet. And so we're asking relief to accommodate that additional 1.6 feet in height. Those are the three plans. And if any questions on those or what's on them, I'd certainly be glad to answer the board's questions now or whatever time you determine appropriate. The question I had when I talked to the homeowner, and I think everybody has, is, well, how did you get there? And this wasn't a case where someone just flaunted what the rules were. I've seen several of these. I've represented people on several of these. I don't know of anybody who's just cast caution to the wind, let's build as high as we want and hopefully won't get caught. It will deal with when we do. That is absolutely not the case. There were a bunch of incremental steps or events that led to the height of the building where it is right now. I have a set of plans here for the building. There are 28 sheets plans that I've gone through. And it showed the second-floor ceiling height. Floor-to-ceiling, the second floor on the plan to be 7 feet 8 inches or 92 inches. When the building was under construction, and plans are plans, and you try to follow the plans as close as you can, but in every single case I've been involved with, there are modifications generally intended to improve the plans. In this particular case, the framing for the second floor, the 2-by-6 foot framing, was cut to the 92 inches, a 7-inch, 7-foot, 8-inch length. What was added to that was a bottom plate, 2-by-6 bottom plate, and a double top plate of 2-by-sixes. And that step alone added 4 and 1/2 inches to the height of the building. So what initially was a proposed height of just over 29 feet just increased by 4.5 inches. And apparently, not full consideration was given to what impact that might have now or as a result of any future events. A second change that was taken to improve the structural integrity of the dwelling is the floor framing between the first and second floor, and the second floor in the attic was increased to the planned 2-by-8 to 2-by-10s. That step added 4 inches. So we've got 4 and 1/2 inches for the bottom plate, the top plate on the second floor, and another 4 inches on the first and second floor total by increased dimensions on the framing lumber. Lastly, the roof pitch was adjusted. What is shown as a six-pitch or a 6-inch drop over 12 inches in order to make for apparently better transition with the two gables that you see on the left and right-hand sides of the building was increased to a seven pitch. That change for a building that's just over 34 feet wide, take half of this over 32 feet wide, take half of that 16 feet. If you take a 16-foot stretch and you add an inch per foot, you are adding 16 inches. And so that 16 inches, as a result of the increased roof pitch, with the 4 inches from the increase in the floor framing dimensions and the 4 and 1/2 inches from the place on the second floor, added 24 and 1/2, 24.5 inches, 24, 24.5 feet, 24 inches. Strike all that, 24, 24 and 1/2 inches to the height of the building. So what started out as a building at 29.2 feet ended up as a structure that's 31.6 feet. That's the number that's shown on Chuck Fair's plan. So again, it wasn't a single change. It was the combination of several incremental field modifications that were done during the course of construction.
In those respects, in those respects, the structure was not constructed according to the plans that were submitted earlier?
Not 100%, no. And I would venture to guess that's never the case. But in this case, it resulted in a zoning violation. And that's why we're here this evening.
Okay. So, Mr. Smith, have you concluded your presentation?
I have not.
Okay, keep going. Very mindful, we're familiar with the property. We did recently allow.
I'd like to talk about some of the relevant zoning issues, if I could. The zoning standard, Nahat zoning bylaw, provides for relief for height, up to a certain extent by virtue of the special permit in Section 5.02, which is repeated on the Table 2, which is a dimensional table. It essentially says the maximum height may be increased to 35 feet by special permit if the ZBA finds additional height will not cause overdevelopment of the lot, comma, increase floor-to-area ratio over that permitted in the district, comma, or, which I was surprised it didn't say "and," it says "or," or interfere with views of or sunlight of adjoining or nearby properties in a significant manner. And again, that's repeated on Table 2, Footnotes of the zoning bylaw. The first prong of that analysis, overdevelopment of the lot, is a somewhat of an objective standard. If you look at the Chuck Fair plot plan that was, I believe, the one he received over the weekend, you'll see that at least by the zoning bylaw standards for density, the building coverage is 18.8%, where it's allowable at 25%. Open space is at 64.5%, where the minimum is 40%. The floor-to-area ratio is 27.7%, where it's allowable up to 45%. So it strikes me that, given the fact that it is well below the maximum building coverage, open space, and floor-to-area ratio, that it would support a finding that the increased height does not result in the overdevelopment of the lot. And I think that's really an objective measure, not a subjective issue. The second prong is increasing the floor-to-area ratio over that permitted in the district, and yet another objective standard. Referring back to the surveyor Fair's plot plan, he measures, calculates the floor-to-area ratio at 27.7%, where it's permitted is 45%. So again, it's a pretty straightforward measurement. The increased height does not cause an increase in floor-to-area ratio above that's allowed in the district. It's substantially below. The third prong is a little trickier, is whether the increased height does not interfere with the views or sunlight of adjoining properties or nearby properties in a significant manner. Looking at that objectively, we're looking at whether or not that 1 and 1/2 feet, or just over 1 and 1/2 feet at the peak of the building interferes with the sunlight or the views of adjoining properties. Referring back to the Reed plot plan, you'll see that the dwelling itself, the structure on the property itself, has substantial setbacks on the right and left side, as well as the front and rear. The right side is just under 20 feet, twice as what's required. Left side is about 40 feet, four times what's required. But just as importantly, the adjoining properties, the abutters to the right, at 29 Castle Road, there is a garage, which is located 10 feet off the property line, 30 feet from the 35 Castle Road structure. The house on 29 Castle Road is offset, completely offset from the setback in the footprint of the structure at 35 Castle Road. And so it's hard to diagnose that there would be any interference, much less significant, with sunlight or views to the abutter at 29 Castle Road, who may be present on tonight's meeting, considering we speak for ourselves. On 37 Castle Road, to the left of the property. Again, just by sideline setback is 40 feet from the structure plus the setback of the property at 37 Castle Road. A butter of adjacent properties across the street, number 12 Castle Road, a one-story building on the corner of Fox Hill Road, 16 Castle Road, a one-and-a-half-story structure on the opposite corner of Fox Hill Road. Or also, across, not only they have the front yard setbacks that they have, the front yard setbacks are supported by 35 Castle Road, but it's also a 50-foot right-of-way, Castle Road, between the two of them. And so I think when you put all those together and you just look at the physical location of the structures and looking to make a determination of whether or not the increase in height, the 1 and 1/2-foot increase in height interferes with the views of sunlight in a significant manner, arguably, the finding has to be that they don't. More trickier than that is a subjective review. And that comes down to generally the opinions of the owners of the adjoining or nearby properties, so-called parties and interests. And I know I've been through hearings on both sides of the equation, where sometimes you get people who have a general interest, people who aren't members of the immediate neighborhood, are not abutters or abutters to abutters, not adjoining property owners, not nearby property owners, just as a town at large, but they don't have standing. It really comes down to, subjectively, what the opinion is of the people who are impacted by the increased height. I had hoped you'd receive a petition that was sent in today. And again, we're at a disadvantage at Zoom. I don't get a chance to sit with you at the desk and hand you documents for illustrational points. And so we had to rely on email. And some of that came in late, and I apologize for that. But one of the things you would have received was a petition. And I'm going to read it to you. Understood, residents of the 35 Castle Road neighborhood are aware that the single-family home recently constructed on the property exceeds the maximum allowable height by 1.6 feet. In our opinion, the home as built does not interfere with our views or sunlight in a significant manner. And that petition is signed by the owners of number 10, number 12, number 16, 18, 20, 29, 37, and 47 and 49 Castle Road. The 10 members, all of which are abutters or abutters to abutters, with one exception, on 37 and 1/2 Castle Road. But I'll get to that in a minute. So you have, and again, I'll hold it up, but I hope this is what you see.
We have it already, Steve. And we've already.
By that, have claimed by their own signature that in their opinion, the building does not interfere with their views or sunlight in a significant manner. And also, it submitted emails. I believe there were seven emails from neighbors, including abutters and abutters to abutters, those so-called parties and interests. And they came from the owners of, there's some redundancy, 10, 12, 16, 18, for the first time, 37 and 1/2 Castle Road and 39 Castle Road. Just to read snippets from a few of them, you certainly can read them in their entirety. I have no objection to finishing your project. 16 Castle Road. It has no impact on our view of the water. 18 Castle Road. I have no objection to the size of your home. Your home is beautiful. It's a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. 29 Castle Road. We don't have an issue with an immediate abutter. We do not have an issue with the height difference. 37 and 1/2 Castle Road and a butter to a butter, someone who didn't have the chance to sign a petition because they're out of town. We have no issue with the height of your house. Nobody impacts us at 37 and 1/2 Castle Road. 39 Castle Road and a butter to a butter of a butter. We find oversight on the height reasonable, acceptable. Would like to see the decision of this project made quickly so that the Petrucci family can complete their beautiful home. And from 6 Fox Hill Road, just at the end of Fox Hill Road, near its intersection with Castle Road, I have absolutely no problem with the height of your new home at 35 Castle Road. And so if the standard is whether or not it's overdevelopment of a lot, then the numbers would say that it isn't. If the standard is whether the floor-to-area ratio exceeds what's allowable in a zoning district, the answer is it does not. It's well below that. And if the standard is whether or not the increase in height will significantly interfere with the view of sunlight in significant manner of nearby adjoining properties, those nearby adjoining property owners have spoken for themselves and said that is not the case. So with that, Madam Chairman, I would ask the board's consideration of granting a special permit allowing for the increase in height of the existing structure. And again, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Certainly. Okay, so thank you very much. We do have all that information. We have the list of the petitioners. We have people who have wrote in support. We have the emails. All of that has been sent to all of us. So before we get into questions, the building department inspector is here today, Wayne Wilson. Wayne, did you want to add anything to the conversation? Or you're just here for questions?
Let me unmute myself first. I know, I was just kind of coming in to answer any questions that anybody might have. Certainly, you've got a detailed explanation of how someone figured out how not to follow the plan. But that's why I put the stop work going on it, and that's why they're in front of you.
Okay, thank you. So does anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith or Mr. Wilson?
I got a question for Wayne. Wayne, so there's a cease and desist order to stop all work on this property?
Technically, there is, but I did give him permission to work on areas not related to the roof.
Okay, yeah, because I drove by, as I think many of us do, on the day of a meeting, we drive by to see what we're looking at. And I did see some workmen there. So I was just kind of concerned about that.
I gave him a little relief in that regard, because the work that I allowed them to continue was not related to the roof itself.
Yeah, and they were working on the front porch. So it's not, that wasn't related to the roof. So, all right, thanks.
Okay.
Wayne, how did you, how did you realize that it was too high?
That's what I carry a tape measure for. So I went in to do the rough frame inspection. And I, you know, looking at it from the street, I said, gee, that looks awful tall. But I actually attributed it to the fact that it's so close to the street that why it looks kind of taller than 30 feet to my mind. But so anyway, when I went in to do the rough inspection, I measured the distance from the ridge pole to the bedroom floor and then compared it to the plan. And on the plan, it's 16 feet from the floor. And in reality, it's 18 feet from the floor. So I immediately knew something wasn't right, notified the owner, and then they came up with all the other measurements. But I mean, I could see it obviously wasn't built according to the plan. And if by just sticking my tape measure out the door and down to the ground, it was too tall. I mean, I just did a simple measure from A to B, and something's right. And so it led to more accurate measuring. But it seemed like it took a while for them to figure out what they actually had done wrong. Because I didn't get an explanation for a good two or three weeks.
I have a question, Attorney Smith. Why do you suppose, does your client give you an answer to why they went off the planes, why they went off the rails?
I'm sorry, didn't you hear the full question?
Why do your client give any reason as to why they didn't build according to the plan?
My understanding through conversations is decisions were made primarily to make the building more structurally sound, going from 2-by-8s to 2-by-10s.
I thought you said there was an increase in the pitch, too, to seven pitch.
By, the explanation that I received is there were modifications of the roof lines to make the gables that project off of, the dormers that project off of the gable roof to transition better from the gable roof to the dormers.
And they didn't think to go down to the building inspector and ask about it?
Clearly, they didn't. And I get, except this for what it's worth. I'm a lawyer, I'm not a contractor, though I've seen a lot over the years. And I have yet to see a building constructed according to plan.
Well, if, if, I guess, just because we're talking about this, because we're talking about this point, and I think we would have to check back in the meeting minutes where we provided a special permit for the setback.
Right, we've already given relief to this property.
What's that?
We have already issued relief for this property.
Not only that, but during that, issuing that relief for this property, I, and only because I just did it on the last hearing, and I know we do it in many hearings, is that we instruct the resident that they must building, build according to the plans presented. And I don't know if it was specifically done in that, under, in their situation. But if it was, they didn't build per our specifications or per our direction, which means, you know, I would be leery about granting relief.
You know, they are back here seeking additional relief, you know?
I don't know, Jocelyn, are we going to accept for those in favor of or those are against? I don't know if there's anyone there. I mean, that's our normal procedure and then.
But we're just asking questions of the applicant right now. And if anyone has any further questions, is what I want to know of the applicant, of the counsel for the applicant.
Yes. One quick question, David McCool here, Attorney Smith. So from the evidence that you've seen, this is all done inadvertently. They made a couple of minor modifications. It added up to why we're here. It was all inadvertent.
They were incremental, independent decisions that were made. It added up to a problem. Any one, any single one by itself probably would have been okay. Is this a wholesale change from the plan that was submitted? Absolutely not. If you look at that building, you walk through these plans, it is substantially identical what's on the plan, but there have been some modifications. That is not out of character in the industry. That's more the norm. So I would take difference with that. And I would encourage the board also to look at the standards for the granting of a special permit or the denial of a special permit for an increase in height in an R2 district, from anything from 30 to 35 feet, and just identify what facts exist that doesn't show that disqualifies for that relief.
Well, my sense, my, my sense of the concern is, in light of the fact that this project was before this board before, and a specific relief was granted and was not conformed to, how are we to be sure that the same problem is not going to reoccur?
I believe that would be in the realm of the building inspector. I think it's inconceivable. Well, first of all, it's done. So I guess the simplest answer is it's not, we're not dealing in the abstract. What's being proposed is what exists. And beyond that, if there's not compliance, the building inspector clearly is not reluctant to put a stop to it. And you'd be justified in doing so.
Thank you. So are there any more questions from the board of the applicant? We're going to move on to asking if there is, if any person's present who would like to speak in favor of the application. And we don't, remember that we already have the written petition, which we will, which has been read into the record by Attorney Smith in terms of address, but we will include in that in our decision. Every single person who has written in favor or opposition. So is there anyone else in favor who would like to speak?
I'd like to say that I'm in favor of the project. I actually, to try to interrupt, a couple of my neighbors reached out. They weren't able to log into the Zoom meeting. Kim Campo gave me the corrected one. But some of my neighbors were interested in logging in to speak in favor of the project.
What is your name and address? We can make a note for you.
My name is Ron Petrucci, 35 Castle Road.
Okay. And obviously, you're in favor for the applicant?
Yes.
That's good. Anyone else who'd speak in favor?
Yes. This is David Walsh. 11 Fox Hill Road. I'd like to speak in favor. I think this building is a great added positive sign for our neighborhood. What was there before was quite unsightly, and this has really done a great service for us because it enhances our property values also.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else who'd like to speak in favor tonight of this application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in office? Oh, Mr. York, is it?
Is this for the, is this for the dignity that you're talking about now?
No, this is for the different property. We haven't got to that yet. Hang on, maybe a few more minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of the application for 35 Castle Road? No? Okay. All right, so the next thing we're going to do is we're going to deliberate, and we're going to talk amongst ourselves. And we will let anyone know if we have any questions, okay? In the meantime, please don't interrupt us. All right? All right, so fellow board members. What does everybody think?
Well, I've been trying to look, I've been trying to look for the meeting minutes of the hearing where we granted a special permit. Because if we.
I have that. I do. Let me share that with you right now. And let me get with my share screen, so everybody can see it. Too many things down here, I think. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Here's the decision, a copy of the decision from thirty-five Castle, from the last decision. And we always put it at the end, but I did a little screening while other people were talking, and I didn't see. And I suspect it's because it was only the front setback that he was seeking, uh, you know, relief from.
So nobody had made that motion with, as drawings as presented?
I don't see it here in the decision, no.
Okay. I mean, and, and I'm not questioning you, Jocelyn, because I know you're really good at this, but it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been something that was just left out of the decision?
It is possible, so I can take a quick look at the minutes as well, if you can hang on a second.
Yeah.
For the minutes.
Can I just ask why, why that is a particular area of concern at that point?
Well, if we, if we ask somebody to build as plans presented and they go and make changes, then they've basically bypassed the stipulation that we've put on the decision. And, 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 you know, I don't know if that means it negates the special permit that we already gave them, but I think it does. I mean, what if, what if, um, instead of building the peaked roof that he built, he decided to build a grand gambrel or, or some other design, and he changed the, the, the plan completely? I mean, we've had that happen in the past, and I think that's why we started to do the plans as presented.
Right, and I agree with you, Peter, in some, most of the time, that is what we do. But we didn't do it here, I'm looking at the minutes right now, and I'm not.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm fine with that, then.
But even just because it's not there, doesn't mean that they have free rein to go and build whatever they want either.
Exactly, exactly, right.
But, but, but I don't even, I think that that's not even the relevant point, it's because they, they were here for one piece of relief, which I think was like a setback, right?
Yeah, it's a front setback.
They were granted that relief, there's a, there's a current issue, which, you know, we, they've gone through what that is. And I think the right way to look at it is, is this relief that's currently requested appropriate to grant right now? That's how I look at it. I, I mean, I know, I see what you guys are looking at, the big picture of the, but I just don't think that the prior application has, bears that much on this application, that, from my perspective.
And Peter, even if.
I would say, I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
Even if there, even if there had been the provision that you thought was in the prior decision, Peter, and it had been violated, or we determined that it had been violated, the relief for that would have been this, the action that Wayne took. In other words, he took the, the only appropriate enforcement action that there could be, and that triggered this new application for relief. So I'm, I'm not sure that we've got any further power to do anything about a non-conformity to the prior action.
Yeah.
And, and in that, in that respect, I, I think it makes sense to look at this as if this were a, a pre-construction application. In other words, if there had been no construction on the site, and we were just asked to, to deal with the, uh, the, the non-conformity of a foot and a half, how would we deal with it?
Right, right, I, I totally agree with you, and, and I agree, you know, Mr. Smith did an excellent job, basically pointing out how we can provide relief, or why we should provide relief, and he, he addressed each of the points. My point was that if we had asked this, um, you know, this person to build according to a set of plans, and they stepped outside of that, I would be reluctant, even though it's already been built, I would be reluctant to give them the ability to do more. That's the way I, that's the way I look at it. You know, I mean, if, if he was coming back to us because instead of being too high, we gave him, I, I forget what the setback was, but we gave him relief on a setback of, say, seven feet versus the ten feet that he's supposed to have. Well, what if he went to five feet instead of seven feet? Now he stepped outside the relief that we actually gave him. So it's, it's kind of a moot point, but I just wanted to find out and make sure that, um, you know, we're being, that our previous, um, our previous decision on this property isn't being, you know, skirted. Right.
And we usually do that, too, we usually put that condition on there, but I think because in this case, we didn't probably think about it, because it was just the front setback.
Right.
Guessing that, because it wasn't either, go, go back and watch the tape, but usually I watch the tape every minute, so we should be covered there. Um, okay, so what we need to do is to figure out, you know, I, I do agree, Attorney Smith did a good job reviewing those factors. Those are the factors I studied today in trying to figure out how I felt about everything. Certainly, this, this is a good sized lot, I think that's a contributing factor for us, it's larger than most. And we have a tremendous amount of support from the community, which I always think of as important, but not the deciding factor. It is only a foot, a little over a foot of difference. Even though I don't like it, and I'm afraid of making mistakes in future development. But I don't know, I'm, I'm in favor of, of allowing it, much to my chagrin, how does everybody else feel?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike, David?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of granting the relief, just because I agree with Attorney Smith on the point that, no matter what we see, these projects are always, they're never going to be exact, exact. There's always going to be a couple inches here, a couple inches there, due to construction or mistakes in construction. And so it's never, it's never going to be exact on any project, so I do agree with Attorney Smith on that point. And because it was a couple of different modifications, there were several inches or a little more, it added up to this. It was inadvertent, and the neighbors are all okay with it, it doesn't impact them. And underneath the thirty-five feet in the zoning bylaw that allows a special permit, so I'm in favor of granting it.
One reason why, though, that I think, that one thing that works against it is the fact that it is a waterfront property. And although we're not supposed to, and we don't follow precedent necessarily, in the past, we've been a lot stricter with the waterfront properties in terms of height. And we've actually had one property that we asked them to take it down, um, about a year ago. So, but that was five feet over, a little bit different. All right, anybody else want to have a conversation?
So maybe, maybe a motion is in order to find that the proposed modification would not be substantially more detrimental?
Okay, anybody want to second that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye, Peter Barber, aye.
Attorney, Attorney Smith has got his hand raised.
Oh.
I know, but we're having, in the middle of a vote, so he can wait till we're done. So, Peter?
Yeah, Peter Barber votes aye.
Max?
David McCool, aye.
I'm aye, I vote aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
And Jocelyn Campbell, aye. So we just made a finding, okay? So I'm, I'll make a break for a second, because Mr. Smith, did you want to say something?
Only that it appear that the criteria for granting this particular special permit is different than those that are referenced, I believe, section seven of the zoning bylaw, not necessarily substantially more detrimental, but
Yes.
The issues is, as to whether or not it's over development of lot, it sees the FAR, or if it's what the, the views.
We're going to get there, just give us a second, okay? We're just not there yet, hang on a second. So what you're going to see, everyone, is, I'm going to share my screen with you again, and you're going to see that, um, one second.
I think we can probably issue it under the other standard, too, though.
We can too, but no, we just haven't got to that point yet. If you want to take a look at your bylaws, that's the part I wanted to show you, I have it highlighted for you on the bylaws, hang on a second. And here are the bylaws. And what we're looking at is section five oh two D.
I'm seeing a plan, not a bylaw.
You don't see a bylaw?
Not on the screen, no. You, you're, you're showing us the, the plot plan of the of thirty-five Castle Road. What was, what was that section?
Seven oh two D.
Two D. It's five oh two?
Yes, five oh two D.
Can you see my word processing now?
Yes, yep.
I have it highlighted for you, so I can bring it up, here you go. This is what Attorney Smith has been talking about. The fact that we have, it says here that the height limitations and dimensional table shall not apply. Are in the R2 V2 natural resource district, the height may be increased to thirty-five. By special permit, if the board finds that the additional height will not cause overdevelopment of the lot, increase floor area ratio over that permitted in the district, given the views. So in order to look at those two points, one of them is the FAR, let's look at the FAR. And I pulled up the dimensional table previously from the, um, I know that Mr. Smith provided it, but I also checked the dimensional table from the prior application. And we have a FAR according to this application of twenty-six percent, which was far less than the required of forty-five percent. So that particular piece was met already. And then the fact that the lot is over the ten thousand square feet meets the other piece of it, so.
So I move that we find that the additional height will not cause overdevelopment of the lot, increase the floor area ratio over that permitted in the district, or interfere with views or sunlight of adjoining or nearby properties in a significant manner.
I'll second that. You, you beat me to it, Mike.
Okay, so would, um, anyone have any discussion on the motion? Nope, okay, all in favor?
Peter Barber says aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Michael Raworth, aye.
And Jocelyn Campbell, aye. If the next step is regarding a special permit, does anyone who'd like to bring a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that based on the findings, we provide the relief of a special permit, increase the height to thirty-one feet, whatever it is, four inches.
Thirty-one point six feet.
Thirty-one point six feet, and that any other work is done according to the plans presented.
Second.
So all, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Peter Barber votes aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Michael Raworth, aye.
And Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay. So, Mr. Petrucci, Attorney Smith?
Yes.
Granted a special permit for you for this issue.
Thank you so much.
Bear in mind, that is an appeal period of twenty days, we will be filing our decision within the next two weeks. And that's it, and after that, you're going to need to record that special permit at the registry of D.
Just one, one thing, if I could, to the extent that it matters, the fact that he did not comply with the previous relief that the board gave him is, is pretty much what got him here today. And so if people don't comply, one way or the other, whether they come back to amend the, the last one, because it would, you know, you wanted to state that it shouldn't have been conformed to those plans, or because it wasn't a conformance, he's in violation, in any event, he had to come back and see you. So you, you were going to get a bite at that apple regardless. This was this, this avenue and not an amendment of the original one.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, everyone, so the next, the next hearing that we have in front of us, it's for fifty-one Pond Street. And on fifty-one Pond Street, we have, um, it started here, the meeting is being recorded as we begin. Today is May third, two thousand twenty-one, and it is five forty-eight PM, that's our start time. And our petition is on for Mr. and Mrs. Dignan for the property of fifty-one Pond Street in Nahat, Massachusetts. And although some of you may have already been present at the first hearing, we want to explain that we are here today doing a Zoom hearing on pro order of Governor, Governor of the State of Massachusetts, an order that was issued on May, March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, allowing us to meet in this fashion, um, rather than in person, to help prevent spread of the coronavirus. That's why we're here today, and we have published notice of this hearing in the newspaper on April, when item, on April nineteenth and April twenty-sixth. And I'm going to quickly read the article that we, that we posted. Public hearing on the petition filed by Sean and Jennifer Dignan for the property located fifty-one Pond Street, Nahat, Massachusetts, seeking a special permit to add an addition. The inspector of buildings has denied the building permit on March first, two thousand twenty-one. Says the proposed addition is in violation of section five oh three of the zoning bylaws of the town of Nahat, where the proposed lot coverage is thirty-six percent, with the maximum allowed is twenty-five percent. The proposed floor area ratio is forty-eight percent, with the maximum allowed is forty-five percent. The left, the proposed left side setback with a minimum allowed is ten feet. And the proposed right side setback is an extension of same, with the minimum allowed is ten feet. That's the advertisement that we placed in the newspaper. I'd like to introduce the board members of those of you who weren't here at the prior hearing, or prior, um, if you're not occurred, but my name is Jocelyn Campbell. Also hearing this matter tonight are David Walsh, Max Casper, David McCool, and Michael Rauer. Peter Barber is here, but he is not one of the members hearing tonight on this matter. Okay, so the next step for us is to begin the hearing, so if the petition would like to present their matter, we would like to hear it.
Hi, this is Tony Rosina, I'm the architect for the project.
Hi, Tony, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
The, the basic, I mean, you guys have seen the plans, you just read off the, the, you know, special permit request for the floor area lot coverage, essentially, the setbacks are existing, and we're going to, we're looking to.
Can you hold on just one minute, please?
Yes.
Somebody has either a TV on or some talking in the background. So could we kind of get them to be quiet wherever they are? I don't know who it is, somebody has been talking.
Just mute if you're not talking, even easier.
Right. I can't seem to mute them myself, all right, we'll keep going.
Yeah, it looks like everybody's muted except for Sean Dignan and Susan Hendrickson. And Tony, of course, because he's speaking.
Okay. All right, Tony, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So essentially, right now, this is a, a two-story structure with a one-story structure off the rear. That's not the full width of the, the front part of the house, so what we're looking to do to be able to add, there's a couple things. One is, this, they currently only have one bathroom in the house, which is located on the second floor in the front above the stair. It's a very small space, and it services the entire house. So by doing what we're proposing to do, which is to square off the, the one-story addition in, in the back, and then extend it six and a half feet further towards the rear, it opens up enough space on the, on the first floor to put in a bathroom that can service the first floor, and gives them a bit more space to have a functional family room in the back, as well as a rear entrance. And on the second floor, we essentially would, would build over a portion of the existing one-story structure by pulling the two bedrooms almost straight back, not all the way back. And then that frees up enough space in the middle of the second floor to allow for a more functional bathroom that would serve all of the bedroom spaces on the second floor. You, you will see in your plans, they do get a bit of a master closet that will help a lot for them. So essentially, that's the, the project in a nutshell, the height does not change. We're just extending the roof line straight back to cover the new, new addition in the rear. And, and that's, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Um, and also, before anybody, before we get into any questions, what have you, I wanted to read in the planning board letter, which I was about to read earlier, so we received a letter from the planning board who commented on this, and just. About to read earlier. So we received a letter from the planning board who commented on this. And just so the applicant and all the other people present know this. When we receive a zoning application, Kim, the, Kim Campbell, the secretary in the building department sends out. A copy of the packet to all of the different boards in town. And then they have thirty five days to comment on it. And that's what sometimes we do get comments. And this is one of those comments today. It's a letter from the planning board that I received on town of Nahat, letterhead, saying basically. Gage Jocelyn, this letter shares the planning board's comments on the above captioned appeal to the Z B A of the denial of a building permit. First, we'd like to call to your attention to the multiple inadequacies of the application. Particularly the lack of any key measurements on the plot plan. Second, we would like to point out that contrary to the description on the application, the proposed addition does not maintain. Or extend the existing nonconformity of the right side setback at approximately three feet, with a zoning requirement is ten feet. The right side setback, the right side of the building is not parallel to the property on that side. And the building and the property line get closer together as one goes deeper into the lot. As drawn on the plot plan submitted, it appears that the extension of the building and the new deck would be set back less than even three feet from the property line. This concerns us from the standpoint of public safety, as well as for precedence to exacerbating nonconformities. We recommend that the Z B A require new construction to maintain the current setback as measured at the rear of the existing building. Thank you for your attention to the comments. Okay. So we've heard from you, Tony. Do you want to address either one of those items that the building, the planning department has raised? One regarding the, it not being parallel to the line and the other regarding the public safety issue?
Uh, sure. As far as, it's true, it is, it isn't parallel when I look at it. If this was maybe something that Wayne could speak to because he's the one that wrote the, the denial letter and, and put it that way. I didn't submit that, that way necessarily. It looks like according to the certified plot plan that. It's roughly, you know, it's roughly three feet. There are, for my purposes as a professional architect, there are adequate measurements on this plan. To be able to see them, which is how, I guess, how they were able to read it and determine what they determined. As far as public safety, I really, I, I, I'm at a loss. I have no idea what they're speaking to there. And why that's a public safety issue.
Well, I believe would be because of fire safety. If the houses are too close together, they won't be able to get to them in time if there's a fire issue.
But they don't have that information to be able to make that call because that's, that's not on, that's not on the plan and. You know, for the most part, the, the house is, you know, between three and four feet from the property line, as is. But I'm not sure how the planning board came up with it as a public safety issue because the other house isn't even, you know, it's not located, nor is it required to be located.
Well, the, the issue I think that they're trying to raise is that it's already nonconforming. And there's a reason why the town has the setbacks that we have, maybe perhaps. I'm not sure. I'm not the planning board. So I don't know.
Right. How close is that? Eighteen Emerald? How, how close is the, the neighbor's house? Roughly, roughly.
To the, to the property line?
Sure.
Is this about ten feet?
To my house, I, I have no issue.
Yeah. To your question, Max, it's probably about ten feet from the property line and then another ten feet to the house, roughly.
All right, thanks. That's, that's helpful.
I think there's a couple of people trying to talk, but you guys are muted.
Does the board have any further questions for Tony?
I'm assuming that the planning board's concern had to do with the ability to get a fire truck into the backyard, if you will, to have access to a fire. And so what's the status of structures that would impede that?
Is that a que, I, I don't want to speak out of turn. Is that a question for me?
That'd be a question.
Okay, it's, it's the same as it is, as it is today, more or less within inches. On the right side, it's the same. It's. It actually probably increases on the left side by about the same amount, inches. So the driveway is on the left side of the house currently. It's remaining there. So it's roughly identical to, to what it is today.
And, and the driveway has access to the backyard, for, affords access to the backyard?
It does. It goes all the way straight into the, to the yard on the left side of the house.
Great. Thanks.
Do any of the board members have questions for Tony or for the applicant? All right, so at this point in the hearing, what we will do is we'll listen to any petitioners who are, who are here to speak on behalf of the applicant. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application?
Yeah, hello, this is Matt Hendrickson. And you're concerned with the fire department getting to their house.
You have to hear.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. In regards to the fire department have to get on the right-hand side of the house. They would do that through my yard. I spent twenty seven years on the fire department. And believe me, they would not be going down that three-foot space. We would not use that for an excess point to the second floor. They would throw a ladder from my backyard. Up to their house. And there's plenty of room there for that.
Okay, so Mr. Hendrickson, you, what's your address? I need to put it down for the application for the.
Sixteen Emerald Road.
Okay. Okay, so you're in favor of the project, sir?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, and your name is spelled what?
H E N D R I C K S O N.
Thanks very kindly.
Is there anyone else here who is speaking in behalf of the applicant or here to speak in favor?
Yes. Go ahead, Greg.
Well, either way, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I'm right next door. You know what I mean? If they needed, if they couldn't get the fire from Matty's yard, they could get it from mine. So.
And what's your last name, sir?
York.
And your address?
Eighteen Emerald Road.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Yes, this is Irene Hammerdick, H A M E R N I C K of twelve Emerald Road. I support the project as well.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the project?
Yes, this is Linda Barbara. I'm at twenty two Emerald Road. And I'm speaking in favor of the project as well. I think it will add to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much. And the next person, who would like to speak in favor?
Yep, my name is Jameson Williams. I'm at twenty three Valley Road. And I'm in favor of it as well.
Okay. And yes, Ms. Schultz, is it?
Yes, hi, my name is Maureen Schultz. I live at thirty one Valley Road, and I am in favor of this project. I actually think that it's nice that the neighbors are trying to improve our neighborhood. So I am in favor. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the project? Okay, I see no hands raised and no one speaking. All right, so thank you very much for coming and supporting your neighbor. So the next thing we're going to do is we're going to go into deliberations, and that's when we talk amongst ourselves. So you can't interrupt us, but we will let you know if we have any questions. Okay? All right, thank you very much. All right, so fellow board members, what does everybody think about this project?
Seems to me that the most significant question is the. The provision suggested by the planning board. In other words, the, the additional width going deeper into the yard. As to whether or not that's going to be a problem.
So our members for this hearing. Michael, David, the only person who's not here tonight is Peter. So Max. David, do you have anything you want to add to this? You know, I, I'll tell you something. When I drove by it, I drove by twice and then I went around the back. And I was kind of perplexed. I'm like, why on earth would we want to add to this? It's so congested. But I understand everybody needs more space. Everybody needs this, and I intend to need a bathroom or have a wet. It just seemed like it was so congested back there. I was a little taken back by it. Then I always go that way. So does anybody have anything in particular they want to say that they feel is important? No? Okay.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, with the design.
And what about the setback?
Me either. I wanna, I feel the same as Dave. It doesn't, you know, it, like, like you said, Jocelyn, everything's congested. None of these are going to be perfect. It's not a huge ask. Nobody's against it. I don't, you know, I hear what the planning board's saying, but, but not really. It's, it's the same condition as, is there already. It's not making anything any worse. I, I'm not, I'm not finding a reason to not approve it.
So I move that the board find that the project as proposed would not be significantly more detrimental.
I will second that motion, David Walsh.
A discussion on the motion? And all in favor?
David Walsh, aye. David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Michael Raworth, aye.
And Jocelyn Campbell, no. I just feel, my, my opinion is I just feel like this is too much. There's four asks here, and it's already nonconforming beyond belief. And I. I think it's too much. So that's my opinion. All right, so next, anyone want to bring a motion?
I'll make a motion that we. Grant the special permit. For the relief requested.
I will second that motion, David Walsh.
A discussion on the motion? All in favor?
David Walsh, aye. David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Michael Raworth, aye.
And Jocelyn Campbell, no. Okay, so, um, Mr. and Mrs. Dingan, we have granted you a special permit for the construction project as per your application. And you will have a decision recorded or filed with the, filed with the town clerk in approximately two weeks. We're trying to do it faster than that. But we have to at least two weeks to do it. And then after that, there's a twenty-day appeal period by which you must wait before you, usually before you begin construction. And you should record your special permit at the registry of deeds. And you should make sure you stop the work within two years of receiving this special permit. Otherwise, it will be, it will expire. Okay? All right, so everybody's all set. And before, don't, if the members could please stay on the lines, we have to schedule a new matter. And everybody else can just take off and stay like, okay?
Thanks, everyone.
Very much.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Jocelyn, just real quick, just so you know, Kim knows, but the Zoom, the Zoom ID was, it was mailed out to everyone? Was different than what was posted. On, on the agenda?
Okay, I, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not a potty to that. All I know, they post it and so.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody seems to be able to have access to it, though. Whatever happens, I don't know. Um.
Bye. I gotta jump off. I gotta go to another meeting. But I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty flexible now. I don't have class anymore, so.
Okay.
Schedule away.
I understand. We just have to schedule something between May eleventh and June tenth.
I, I think it might be the ones I'm not going to be participating in anyways, right?
Fifty eight Lennox?
Oh.
The one?
No.
Okay, we have four of them scheduled on May seventeenth. I haven't sent out the lineup for those yet because I wanted to take care of this one first and not everybody be confused. Um, so the one that was, the, the new one is sit fifty eight Lennox, that has to be scheduled between May eleventh and sixth and June tenth. Is any Monday okay with you, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
Every Monday is fine with me.
Mondays are good for me, too.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, May seventeenth is not good. I have town meeting in Swampscott.
May seventeenth, you have a hearing with us. Remember? We scheduled four matters on that night.
I know I said I had town meeting, though. I remember saying it.
And we might have town meeting, too.
No, it'll be the fifteenth and the sixteenth.
But you also.
It may not finish by then.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Exactly.
We talked about scheduling them, so the one that I was going to were going to be first, right?
Well, we already had one scheduled for five, so what we.
Right, my town meeting's not till seven, so I think we'll be good.
You're on at five thirty and you're on at six.
Yep, that'll be good. We'll make it work.
What I'm gonna do this time is I'm going, and I wish I should have told something to Trey Smith tonight. Because, you know, sometimes he can talk, he's great. He's, it'd take a while to speak. That's all I'm saying, I think. We'll give everybody a half an hour and we'll say that's it. Okay, so you do your speed. And if you want to continue your matter, we will, but you only have a half an hour on that evening. Because we only have, we have time constraint.
All right, so I'm, I'm good for every Monday other than that and Memorial Day, but I, I really gotta jump, jump over, okay?
Okay, we'll take care of it, Dan.
Thanks, bye.
What, what are we, what are we going to do if town meeting goes to a third day?
Well, what's the chance of it going for a third day and then still going on at five o'clock at night?
Well, it wouldn't, it would.
It would be around five o'clock or six o'clock.
Yeah, it would start at maybe six o'clock, seven o'clock. So. I mean, the, the only thing that I could, the only thing I could suggest is that we would do a postponement. Or, you know, just be, because it wouldn't be fair. I mean, I, I, I'm, I could be presenting at, you know, at that point in town meeting. So, you know, that's, that's going to be a problem. Yeah, the, as far as the, as far as the end of May, beginning of June, and I haven't gotten confirmation, I'm waiting to get travel approval back from my company. But I have a special project that I may be assigned to in Dallas. Not to say that I can't sit, because I've sit remotely before. I just want to, you're like, I, I'm not sure when it is and. Yeah, I, I think either, I think Mondays would be fine. The rest of the week I'd be a little worried about because I would be traveling either the twenty fifth or the first of June.
Okay, so if we have, if town meeting continues for that Monday night, we'll, we'll just postpone it. But I have to.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Well, I mean.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it make more sense to, to schedule things for the twenty fourth? So that we don't have to notify everybody who may be, I mean, there's four matters on. That's a lot of dislocation in people's plans.
Right, but we already have it scheduled. It's already been scheduled and advertised.
And advertised. So I would say that we, there's a high likelihood we would get through. The, at least the first few of those. And, you know, if we start running out of time, then we would just, again, make a motion to postpone based on, you know, town meeting. Running over. I mean, we, who could possibly have foreseen that, that town meeting would run into a third day?
Right. All right, so if it happens, it happens. You know, I just.
Right.
Schedule all these matters. So I don't know.
Right.
All right, so I'm gonna follow up with Kim on the issue of Zoom. But everybody was able to get in. Okay, I know I sent the wrong one today when I was doing my, trying to remind everybody.
Yeah. Well, I, I apologize, but earlier I was, I yelled down to my wife because she was passing off the, because I was already on the meeting. They knew I had the right meeting, so I was passing off the, the Zoom. What do you call it? The, the, the meeting number and passcode because it's not, the, the letter that we received is not correct.
Okay, the one you sent in mail?
The one that we received in the mail, the notice of public hearing, is incorrect.
We, Kim sent those out, so I'll check with her about that.
Right.
We need a secretary.
The one that was on the town website was correct.
Right. But, I mean.
But, I mean, thankfully.
Explain it. I don't know why the mail was a little different.
Yeah, thankfully, all the butters, at least, I, I mean, I know I didn't see Tim and, and Julie. There's direct next-door neighbors. I didn't see Melissa Gallery or a few people across the street, but not that they would have, would not have gone, gotten on. But most, most of the neighbors were on.
And so another thing I want to tell you all is that David McCool is going to be leaving us.
Oh, geez.
David?
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, no, no, I apologize. I just, I have a lot going on in my regular job and another, something else coming up. But I'll stay on as, you know, as long as I have to until just, you know, until we have, you know, someone to replace and all that. So.
Appreciate that, David. And I know you mentioned a while ago to me that you, things were getting tight for you.
Yeah.
So.
I'll, I'll, you know, I get through May and then, you know, maybe through June if I have to, whatever, you know, I'll, I'll I'll do it. I have until you're all set, I'll stay on.
Especially these matters that were on, like for the, I'm going to be cutting this out for the May. There, there were four and we had several recusals. So if you weren't available, I don't know what we'd do.
Right. Hey, Jocelyn and, and David, I certainly wouldn't want to push you to stay on past what you can, you could do. But do we have a, do we have a definitive number? Like, so David has been a member for, well, I think more than a year now. Could he stay in the wings as a kind of a member? And if we had an emergency, hey, David, would you be able to step in and, and sit through a hearing because we had, you know, some people that recuse? I'm, just, you know.
Instead of a regular member?
Yeah, well, as an alternate, but how many alternates, you know, could, like, even if we didn't use him as often as we would a normal alternate? And again, David, I don't want to push you into something that you may not be interested in doing, but I just, just a thought. I mean, you know.
I think he wants out.
Yeah, well, I would like to say, until like, where you have a couple of new alternates that one of them could step into my position.
Right.
And I could be an alternate. I mean, I would, I would do the best I can to help you for as long as I could.
I could see that'd be really good, like on those rare circumstances when we have more than one recusal or even two or three. Like, we could have, according to our rules and regulations, we can have the five members plus up to four alternates. And right now, we have five members and two alternates and we run into a problem sometimes because of such.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I, it's just a suggestion. And then we, again, try and fill the position and then fill, you know, get other alternates.
Okay, we will. Tony said he had somebody else in mind, so I'll, I'll run that by him. So before we, before we go anywhere, two things. Why do we have to, I'll pick a date, I guess, for this hearing on fifty-eight Lennox, the Monday? Does everybody, I'll work around Memorial Day. And if Mondays are okay for everyone, I'll pick a Monday, like maybe the first Monday in June or something?
Mm-hmm.
I'll see, I don't know when, when Memorial Day is. I forget.
It will be twenty. Yes, the thirty-first, I think that's a Monday, the first, well, I'm sorry, the first one in June should be like the eighth.
Yeah.
Be the sixth.
Yeah.
Okay.
The thirty-first is Memorial Day.
Right.
Who's the twenty-fourth, which is just a week after our next hearing, or we do June seventh?
Doesn't matter, either way.
Okay. Twenty-fourth of the seventh?
Yeah.
Anybody care? Michael, do you care?
Yep.
Yeah, Mondays are fine for me, so.
David, I couldn't hear you. What'd you say?
Mondays are fine for me.
Okay.
It doesn't matter too much.
You don't care if it's the twenty-fourth or the seventh?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think the five o'clock works great because, I mean, the only problem I may have is if I have a work call, but, you know, it is what it is.
I'm going to pick the seventh. I'll tell you why. Because in the event that we do have to continue the one that's on the seventeenth, we'd want to do it the next week.
Okay.
So if we do have to continue, we'll leave that date open, okay? And I'll pick the seventh for the fifty-eight Lennox.
We could, we could still be debating, we could still be debating on the twenty-fourth, though.
So we need to approve the last minutes that were sent out and then some, any prior minutes. So let's, I need someone to make a motion.
Motion to approve the past minutes.
Second.
Is it all minutes or just the last meeting minutes?
The past, the pending past minutes.
The last ones and any past minutes. We're going to ratify any past meetings in case we missed any along the way. So anyone want to second that motion?
Yes, I seconded it.
David Walsh.
Okay, and any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
All, all in favor?
Uh, Peter Barber votes aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Justin Campbell, aye. Okay, I'll just clear that. All right, so we're done.
Cool. All righty. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Talk to you later. Bye-bye.
Take care.
Thank you.